Doesn't say on here. Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, November 20, 2025. It's been a minute, so welcome back, everyone. Let's see. Meeting is called to order, and Michael, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I would like to pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, in the business of liberty and justice, we hope.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like we have a full complement of commissioners tonight, as well as city attorney. And we have guests, we have guests, we have presentations, but I'm going to keep things moving along because we have some people in the audience that I want to, I want to take care of them as quickly as possible under the circumstances. First, do we have a motion? Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The agenda is approved unanimously. Announcements and introductions. Bob, anything?
No.
Dennis?
Come back to me.
Okay. Matt? No. Nope. Nope. And I have nothing? Okay. Dennis, I'm back to you.
Okay. If the folks in the, on the dais and don't, and the, and the audience don't know, Treeland, which is across the freeway from the Leonis Adobe property at Valley Circle Mulholland, and on that side of the road, there's no, it's old Ventura Boulevard, it's been sold, and the Treeland property is closed, and the property is going to be developed into a cemetery, and everybody's been saying Pierce Brothers, it's not, it's actually Dignity Memorial Park, and they're owned by an international conglomerate that deals with cemetery services. The impact on the Old Town Territory and on Calabasas is going to be less, in my opinion. I'm not dealing with other than just announcing that that's happening, so pay attention and understand what that is going to do or won't be doing, because there isn't going to be housing, they're going to keep all the trees on that property as part of the, obviously, the landscape of the cemetery itself. And there's a lot to be learned in dealing with that change, including relations with our sister city across the freeway, Hidden Hills, so, and the city of Los Angeles and the county of Los Angeles, so that's going to have implications for us here in the commission and on the staff as that continues to develop and change. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. We're on to public comments. This is the portion of the program for members of the public wishing to address the commission on matters that are not on the agenda. I do have three speaker cards for item number three on the agenda. I don't see anyone else in the audience, so we're going to move on. On to the consent calendar. We have approval of the minutes of August 21, 2025, if anyone remembers back that far. Do we have any additions, corrections, or a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. The meeting minutes for August 21, 2025 are approved unanimously. All right. Moving on to new business. I'm going to ask the city attorney. I would like to take the new business and the public hearing items, I want to take something out of order. I would like to take item number three out of order due to certain circumstances that I will mention in just a moment. Do we need a formal motion? Do we need approval of the commission, the commissioners, to take an item out of order?
My recommendation is that you have a motion to amend the agenda to move item three ahead of items two and four.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Hearing none, thank you.
May I just take a second? I didn't, I didn't mention something that was in the minutes of August 21st?
Yeah.
Because at that point, under announcements, I announced that the, that the California Department of Parks and Recreation was going to be working on taking down the Rins Dam in the minutes, it says the National Park Service. I mean, they've been defunded here in the Santa Monica Mountains, which is really a tragedy, but it'll be the state park system that is dealing with that matter, and there's a budget for it from the state, not from the federal government, which has been denying or defunding National Park Services in the Santa Monica Mountains for the time being.
Okay. Do we need to reopen that item? All right. We will go back for a moment and re-
So I'll amend my, I'll amend my motion to add Dennis' change.
That correction? Thank you. And I-
And I'll second that, then.
And all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Then, thank you for that, Dennis, and Michael. The minutes are approved as amended. Now, moving on to public hearing item number three, we did just take a vote to move the matter ahead of items two and four. And I would like to address, I would like to address the members of the public who are here, Rich Perio. Scott Kunes, and Marley Tempez. I have a question for you, and I, I'm going to open the public hearing on this. This matter is being continued to a, we anticipate in a moment that this matter is going to be continued to a date certain, and we have a couple of options here. There will be no presentation tonight. There will be no, no one, no one representing, unless you are representing the applicant. The typical, the typical presentation and hearing will not happen today, so you have two choices. One is, I'll open the public hearing and take your testimony, take what you have to say. It'll be in a little bit of a vacuum since there won't have been a presentation about the project, and unfortunate but circumstances related to the project necessitated continuing the hearing. Again, this is all perspective, because we're about to continue it. The other option is to come back on December 18th, which is, I believe, the date that is going to be proposed to continue the, the public hearing on this matter, and there will, at that time, be a presentation from staff, there will be discussion. It might be a, it might be a more, more effective time to be heard on it, but that, I, I'm actually going to leave that up to you, because you did come out today. We didn't know for sure that this was going to happen. Do I need to open the public hearing to get a response of what their preference is?
Yes.
Technically, yes. Yeah. Okay, so I'm going-
Madam Chair, before you, sorry, before you open the public hearing, can I just add a couple of things really quickly?
Certainly.
First, of course, we apologize that this item is going to be continued, or that staff is going to rest, request that the item be continued, but after the hearing notice was sent out, staff did notice a couple of technical concerns and issues that they wanted to continue working with Public Works on. So that's why we're requesting, or going to request that this be continued to the December 18th meeting, to give the applicant more time to work out those technical issues. With that being said, the staff report is posted on the website, so whoever's here from the public or watching can go and review that staff report, as well as the plan should be posted on the website, and a bunch of other technical documents. So all of that is available for the public, and our request would be to continue this to the December 18th meeting. If for some reason, we can't get this squared away by the December 18th meeting, then of course, we'll issue a cancellation on that item, and then we'll have to renotice it for when it actually does move forward. Also, with all of that being said, anyone that is interested in details of the project can certainly schedule an appointment with the project planner, which is Joel Hayes, and review information there. I would still recommend opening up the public hearing, so that way, because we do have people, members of the public that came here tonight, and if they have some concerns or comments, then they can get that on the record, and we could still open the public hearing again on December 18th.
All right. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Certainly.
In regards to this, does this affect the timing of the applicant, applicant's work, or anything that we might need to do in order to deal with that? I don't think we should be, you know, penalizing them in any way, just because of the timing issues, but that's another issue to talk about. But is this affecting their, I guess, their schedule?
It does have an impact on their schedule, however, it's their plans that had some technical issues, so that impact was from their own design professional.
So it's not, bottom line, it's not ready to come before us.
Not ready to come before, for consideration.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and ask those who are here to speak on the project, what is your preference? Do you want to be heard tonight? Or do you want to come back and, I, I'm sorry?
As well as-
Okay. Fair enough. The public hearing is open. Since there's been no presentation, I, I don't think that there is going to be any discussion from the commissioners. It will just be, the purpose of the public hearing will be to hear what you have to say. Is there a preference amongst you? Who goes first? That's why I ask. Okay, and if you would please state your name and city of residence for the record.
Rich Perilu, Calabasas. I live across the street from the property.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
All right. First of all, just to be clear, I'm perfectly fine with people building houses in the Highlands. Okay? Not bashing that, just very specifically, there, there are two comments I want to make. Number one is water, as many of you guys may know, is a very serious issue in the Highlands. There are, we're on the side of a mountain, there are three drains. This property, a major drain goes through this property, and that effectively moves a lot of water from the bottom, from the top of the hill to the bottom of the hill. There is a foot and a, maybe an 18-inch pipe that goes underneath this property from the road above, it goes directly underneath this property. Okay? Make sure everyone pictures that. And it goes out into a drain right in front of this, of the, of the, of the property. So it goes underneath the ground into this, into this drain built in, and then this drain has another pipe that goes underneath the road, right next to my house. Okay? So if there is ever an issue with drainage, the water would go directly into my house. And there's precedent for this, because there's lots of stories about stuff like this happening in the Highlands over many years. I've been here 10 years, you hear a lot. This is the third person that's owned this property, since I've been here for 10 years, and they've always tried to build on it, and they've still, this person is the last person that's gone further. But my biggest concern is the drainage. And if this drainage isn't taken care of, I will have issues and, and, and problems with this. I fully support a creative approach to drainage, whatever that may be, but this is critical. This is a, this to me should kill the project if you can't figure it out. I'm very okay with figuring it out, but if you can't figure it out, but the idea of moving this drain somewhere else, that doesn't make any sense, because it also goes into a very big ditch alongside of my house, after it goes under the road, into this, this individual's property. So this is a big deal. Number two is, there's literally no place to park. You can't even drive onto the property, by the way, because it's a big, there's no place to park on a property. Okay? So they would have to figure out a way, and there's no parking on the street, because it's, it almost, it's almost a one-way, a, a, a one-lane street. So again, not knocking the idea of building a house here, but if this stuff isn't done and taken care of, we can't have cars along the street, I won't be able to pull into my own driveway. So these are things that we need to think about. There is a, a parking lot, oh, damn it. Is it?
Go ahead and finish.
Okay. There's a five-car parking lot for the entire Highlands down the street, and if they decide to use that, that's going to knock a bunch of people who have their kids, such as me, parked there. Okay? So I'm really interested in this, and I'll have conversations with Joel and others over the next couple of weeks, to make sure that everyone understands the, the, you know, the seriousness of this.
All right. Thank you. Next up, looks like Marley Tempez?
No, L, it's Temple.
Temple.
That's okay, it's my writing. I live in Encino, but I own three lots across, or I'm the neighbor of Rich, and it's also kind of kitty across. So main concern is drainage. I have to say, I was there this weekend, and the water really gushes down, and there's an exposed grid where you can see the water coming through under the street, so what happens, because this is the side of Aster Trail that is pretty steep, so I don't know if they have to put caissons in, but what if, you know, these people come and they do it everywhere, they don't know there's a drain, so I, we're very concerned that this water line that comes from clover, from the street above us, gets damaged or obstructed. That's one thing. But my main concern is the parking and the driving. I already talked to Joel, I came to the counter, when I saw, six, seven months ago, that this building is coming up, because it's a, it's, it's a very narrow street that we can live with, but when you come from Summit, or when you come from Yomulholland, the first thing this street has is this huge dip. It goes very far down, and I was going to measure it, I don't know what the degree is, but you come up and you do not see anything. So a lot of people walk their dogs, and people have to accelerate, especially people who are not very experienced drivers, and they shoot up, and there's people walking, if somebody is parked there, it's going to, it's, it's calling an accident, I'm telling you that. So we've had people parked on our lots. Normally, I allow it, but now I'm also very concerned, because our lot is the one, and Joel knows it, where people like to, because there's nothing built yet, and we have a little bit of a setback, so they always rear in, because people come up. So I don't live there, I have no problem, but the problem becomes when they start construction, because they're going to either park there, but it's going to have a huge effect. So my suggestion, to make it short, was, can we consider making this a one-way street, to at least don't have that fear that people are walking, or people come up? If, if it's a one-way street, at least, it takes a little bit of this danger away, and it's a short street, I know we would have to ask all the neighbors, but it's easy to either circumstance it by clover, or by Valley, Valley View under. So it is technicality, not a big problem for, I don't think, anybody. It's not even a detour. Yeah. So, yeah, so that's my, that's a, that's a big concern, the parking. Another, which I discovered when I came to the counter, I always thought this area is kind of rural, to me, it's very rural, but apparently, you can't put certain fences on, and I still don't understand, that's something that, yeah, but, yeah, that's another issue. I think that's it.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Kunes?
Scott Kunes, Calabasas. I live next to Rich. I'll defer my comments until the December 18th, when we see a presentation, or perhaps a subsequent meeting when we see a presentation, so I'm good for now.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. All I will say at this point, thank you for coming in and sharing your comments with us. Joel, you've heard the comments, and as this is developed and before it comes back to us, you might want to take all this into consideration, because I suspect that the commissioners will have questions related to these issues, questions and/or comments, so you might be able to get ahead of it, having, having heard what the neighbors have to say.
Thank you. I just want to say, Madam Chair and members of the commission, first of all, we apologize, this had to be continued. The drainage issues that were brought up, just to let you know, are things we've already identified and are working with Public Works to make sure the plans are addressed, because they're not adequately addressed on the set we would have otherwise been presenting. That's why we did not present it. So we are already, we've already spoken with the neighbors before the meeting started, they've been introduced to Joel, they will be in meetings, so that we can make sure we share what we're learning from them, they'll share with us in detail, and we'll be able to show them what we're already working on. And I'm sure we'll have the questions answered when we bring this to you in December.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you. Commissioner Washburn? Yeah, sure.
Tom, don't go away. I went up there to look at the proposal, and if you come, I guess, from west to east on Aster Trail, you do get to a place that you cannot see over, and I'm not sure on which side of that hill these neighbors are, that would be good to know, and how that affects the current public safety issues that are on the street. If you go down Aster Trail until you get to, I think, Valley View, and then you turn around and go up the hill, there is a sign that says, you can't see over the hill, or something to that effect, and it's facing the traffic that's coming from west, I mean, from east to west. Again, you cannot see over the hill, if you don't go one mile an hour, you're afraid. So that's a Public Works issue, as opposed to a property owner's issue. And if you try to pull over, you know, onto the north side of Aster Trail, in order to be careful, there's no room there, and it's dirt. And if it's wet, or if it's icy, which it does get cold up there, cars are unable to, you know, to navigate the, the streets, so I'm sure that's already, already a part of the equation you're trying to deal with, but who put the sign up that says, you can't see over the hill? And are we the folks that have to put the sign on the other side, if the hill needs to be warned, coming from, you know, canyon, in order to get to the property?
Can you answer that question?
Well, I know that we want to answer a lot of questions about an item that we're asking to continue, but-
My recommendation is, the question has been asked, and that we defer the response until the applicant is present to be able to hear the deliberation.
We were encouraged to go up and see the story polls, which I did, and I have photographs of what it's like in the rain, and I'll be happy to share those with staff and the property owners, if they wish to see them, and with the staff's, obviously, input on how that should be handled from a legal standpoint.
All right. Thank you. Bob, did you have something?
Yes. One of the speakers, the lady, indicated a request that the road be converted to a one-way street. That's not something that this commission can do, but it should be looked into and brought back, so we have some information before the people open it up, so that's what I would request.
Okay. Well, staff has, has heard what has been said, and when we, when we have the full hearing on this, and the applicant is present, we'll, we'll deal with those issues. Now, is there a request?
Sure. Vastberg, I just wanted to add too, if any of the commissioners, since the packets and plans have been shared with the commission, if any of the commissioners have any questions or concerns, to, please feel free to- or concerns, please feel free to share those with me, reach out and email those. That way, we can do some research and answer those questions before the next hearing.
Terrific. Thank you. All right. Someone have a request?
Yeah, again, the request from staff is to for the commission to approve a motion to continue this to the December 18th meeting.
Madam Chair, do you need a motion to that?
We need a motion.
I'll move that we continue this to December 18, or as advisable to the staff, so that our scheduling is also convenient for everybody.
Yeah. At the moment, the motion really would have to be, I believe, to continue to a date certain. If if circumstances change, circumstances will change, and that will change. But the motion itself should be to a date certain.
December 18.
Correct.
Staff recommendation, that's my motion.
Yes. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Item number three on the agenda will be continued to the December 18th meeting. Thank you, folks. All right. Let's go to item number two, which is the sales tax initiative presentation. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chair, Vice Chair, esteemed Commissioners. It is a privilege for us to be here tonight, and we thank you for this opportunity to present. Let me get this up on screen here. Scott, do you know the mechanics of getting it shared?
Shared. There we go.
So tonight, Commissioners, our goal is to present a very high overview of a potential sales tax initiative that the city council is considering. This is not something new. It was discussed in 2024 initially. It's come back now in 2025 with the intent of having that discussion for a 2026 ballot initiative. And as we've gone through this process, it's been a wonderful learning opportunity for us, and we appreciate the questions and comments that come because every time that we make this presentation or we engage with commissioners or residents or whoever that might be, it allows us to dig deeper into the numbers or to do a little bit more research and find the the information that is being requested. As the Commissioners are aware, in 2024, the council chose not to move forward with a sales tax initiative. What that meant is we adopted a budget at that time and have been working pretty lean since then. And again, in 2025, our budget was a very, very lean budget, and we'll talk about that. One of the reasons, and if if nothing else that you take from this this presentation tonight, and our goal is to move quickly through the slides so you can spend more time asking questions, but one of our main goals is to help understand that there is some urgency with making a decision by the voters on this. And that urgency is that the the current sales tax cap in LA County is 10.75%. And the this current sales tax in the city of Calabasas is 9.75%. So that means there's a delta or a difference of 1%. If Calabasas does not claim that, we run the risk of the county or any other entity, taxing entity, coming in claiming that 1%. And I was in a meeting just earlier this week with the Cog Cities. A representative from Supervisor Horvath's office was there talking about their difficulty with their budgets. I think, as many of you are aware, there was a settlement in April, a judgment for a child abuse case through the foster care system. And the the settlement was for $4 billion, B with a B, billion. This is a very horrible situation. I feel for those children and the families. Subsequently, in August, there was a second settlement of about 825 million. So in total, the county owes about $5 billion. They are at the point that they are going to start looking for cash wherever they can find it to run their operations over the next few years. So again, this is why we're trying to be get out in front of this. We want to keep Calabasas Calabasas, and this is one of the ways to do that. So with that, again, Commissioners, we will go through these slides fairly quickly. I know you have copies at the dais for you, and I've had a chance to review this. Many of you have attended our meetings at the council, so we'll go through these, but and happy to go through questions afterwards. So for agenda tonight, I won't read through these, but again, really, it's where are we today? How did we get here? And where are we going? Those are the main points of what we'll cover. I mentioned a lean budget, both last fiscal year and this current fiscal year. When we started our budget process, initially, when we went to the Budget Subcommittee and the council, we started with a $2 million deficit in our general fund. Now, our general fund, as you're aware, is what covers our our police services. It covers emergency preparedness, covers general operation of the city, planning, community development, building, administrative finance, and so forth, parks, recreation. So we started with a $2 million budget, got that down to about $600,000, and was adopted by the council. We spent a lot of time looking historically about trends, and based on those trends, we were able to look at, excuse me, historically, over the last 10 years, what certain categories or cost are increasing, the amount they're increasing. And so we use those trends, those escalators, to project forward going into the next 10 years. And so what you see here in the green line is our revenues in the in the green, and then yellow are our expenses. Again, this is if nothing changes, as it is right now, our expenses will outpace our revenues over the next 10 years. What does that mean? It means in 10 years, we will be running a $6 million deficit in our general fund, and that is a structural deficit. This is not something that is caused by a recession or other minor downturn in the economy. This is a structural deficit, meaning that it is, it has to be fixed. If we go in, if we continue in that direction, what happens is in the next five to six years, we will deplete our entire reserves. You have a council that has been very fiscally minded over the last number of years. It's a wonderful council. They're very in tune with what's happening with the city. They've set a policy to be have 50% general fund reserves. That means whatever our expenses are for that year, they want 50% in reserves. If we continue again through this pace, it will be depleted in five to six years. I'll turn it over to Scott to take over the next slides on that.
Thank you, Kenan. Wanted to spend a few minutes on what's driving the gap, kind of how we we got here and so forth. So if we look at some historical trends, this is one of probably my my favorite graphs in this whole whole deck, and simply because, you know, costs, costs rise, correct? We can all agree with that and and support that. But if you look at the salaries and benefits, the one thing that's in our control, over 10 years, it's only increased by 13 and 1/2%. It's about 1% per year, which is pretty phenomenal, as opposed to sheriff services, that's increased by 32%. Electricity, 211%, and so on and so forth. So costs that are outside of our control, going up dramatically, but those within our control remain relatively flat. As to property taxes, one item that that folks do not realize, we are the, as you know, there's 88 cities in LA County. We're the last to incorporate. So when you're the last to the table, the county doesn't give you very large allocation in terms of property tax. We're only at 4.7% of that 1% you get for for property tax. Give you an example, on a $1 million property here in Calabasas, the city only gets about $470 in our in our coffers for for that. So when you look at other cities and so forth that are looking at a much higher property tax percentage that they receive, historically, since our inception, we've only received for about 4.7%. So I wanted to share that was that data with you as well. In terms of unfunded capital initiatives, we are nearing $28 million of of identified unfunded capital improvement projects. That's parks, facilities, et cetera, that we need to need to address. So as you know, the council has reviewed several options for revenue. Now, when it comes to taxes, at least on paper, the the best way to to increase your taxes is you go afterwards called a TOT, which is your hotel bed tax, right? That's because that tax falls upon the tourists, not on us, because we're not staying in our hotels here in the city, most likely. Second best, or I guess a better option, would be a sales tax. In our case, about 57% of out-of-towners, non-residents, actually pay for the sales tax. So in a worst-case scenario, though, would be something like a property tax or parcel tax. Obviously, it's going to hit each and every one of us that that live here. So we're kind of in the middle of the road. By the way, TOT doesn't bring in, I think it's like $700,000 if we increase that and so forth. So in short, a local sales tax to UT makes the most sense. So as Kenan indicated, we're currently at 9.75%, and only 1% of that stays here in Calabasas. So under this this current suggestion, which is to increase the sales tax by by 1%, we'd actually have 2% that remain here in Calabasas. And as you can look anywhere across the country, it's inevitable that we're going to end up paying that cap, that 10.75. It's just a matter of who's going to keep the money. That's going to either go to the county and go to special districts. I think it's wise for us to come to the table and and secure that that funding and keep it local here in Calabasas. As I shared a moment ago, the good news is that even with a sales tax, most are from non-residents. So we get this data from a company called HDL, and they they provide us with the intel that that shares or shows us this type of breakdown.
And Commissioners, Scott has already talked about this, again, the importance of why keeping these funds local. There is a process through this because it is a local tax. It requires voter approval. What the council action or the council's part of that is they choose to put something on the ballot. So the council does not determine that a tax is in place. They choose to put something on the ballot whereby the voters could then approve it. The council is looking at what's called a general sales tax initiative, which would require 50% plus one vote. And that's very doable in California. If you look back historically, most of those proposed by cities throughout the state in the last decade have passed. What does it mean to us if we do a 1% or a 1 cent sales tax? You'll hear those terms interchange. It's a penny for every dollar spent, or 10 cents for every $10, if you think about it in that context. For your individual pocketbooks, it's about $8.25 per month, per person in town. So it's a combo mill. It's a, you know, it's a, it's a very small amount collectively. And again, the benefit that we receive is nearly 60% of our total sales tax dollars are coming from the outside people who live or work here, who visit here, who are spending their dollars here. How do we compare? Again, we're at 9.75%. The county cap is at 10.75%, and you can see cities in proximity to Calabasas and what their percentages are currently. Now, we do know in talking with different consultants and and some of our colleagues in other cities, those cities that are like Glendale or Pasadena, Burbank, that are at the 10.5, they're also looking at going to the 10.75% to protect those, that remaining dollars from what could be a county or a air quality or air district intrusion on Where would the tax dollar goes? Again, it stays local. It's for public safety, fire protection, programs and services, parks, streets and sidewalks, vegetation management, those things that, again, through are funded through the general fund. What is not hit is groceries or medicine, labor, tuition, housing. Those are not taxed through the sales tax initiative. As we've met with different members of our groups in the community and individuals, the the question that comes up over and over again is what has the city done? And we explained some of those steps earlier with our leaner budgets these last years. But we've been even more diligent in reducing our workforce. We recently implemented a hiring freeze. Two weeks ago, we scoured the budget again, and we pulled another $100,000 of programs and events out of the budget. And we're going to be going back to the council on December 3 with some enclosed session to discuss some other personnel changes that we would like to implement that would see additional savings. We've eliminated contracts. We've renegotiated contracts. We've used one-time reserves. We are, we are doing what every good steward of your city's finances should be doing at this point. So what happens if this doesn't move forward? Overall, in that green box, you can see the the biggest takeaway on this is that in time, we'll see the city's ability to respond financially to whatever that is, emergencies, public safety parks, and open spaces significantly constrained. We have to give up services to be able to sustain operations. What are our next steps? On December 3, the city council will hear the results of a survey that's been conducted. We've been working with a group, the same group that conducted two different surveys last year. They just finished their survey, and and we will start getting that data that comes in, the results from that survey, and those that information will be presented to the city council on December 3. From there, the council will determine, do they move forward with a ballot initiative on June 26 or on November 26? It is important to note that if if the council moves forward with a June 26 ballot initiative, that would have to be done with the declaration of a fiscal emergency. And then, again, but depending on that vote, it would be presented to the voters' force for their approval. Next steps also, we want people to be involved in this process. We need your help. It's not only just about being informed, but also being able to ask questions and help us understand where there might be things that we're missing in the presentation, but also sharing with your neighbors. We're happy, as we've mentioned to other groups, our goal is to come to every single commission meeting. You're the first. We'll be heading all of the others in in January and February. We have had meetings with the Senior Steering Committee, Calabasas Park Homeowners Association Board last night. We're willing to meet with other boards. We're willing to meet in your living room with friends and neighbors. You pick a place and a time, and we'll be there to to share the message and help get this out. We will have a landing page that will be published shortly on the website that will hold the slides and some other relevant information, and so that will be easily accessible to. We don't feel like you have to own that information, and we want you to be able to point them to the the resources and the tools that will help them do that. And with that, Chair, Madam Chair, we are open to any questions and comments from the commission.
All right. Thank you very much. It was an excellent presentation, very, very to the point, but very, very highly informational. Before before I ask my fellow commissioners about their questions, I'm wondering, are there any, have there been any projections of what type of revenue? How much revenue would be anticipated to be generated if this if this were to be implemented?
Great question. So if the council were to propose a 1 cent or a 1% sales tax initiative, that would generate about $5.3 million per year, and then grow thereafter. If if the council was, one of the things that we tested for in the survey was a 3/4 cent or a 0.75% sales tax initiative, if the if the council chooses to put that on the ballot, that would be about $4 million per year.
All right. Thank you. All right. I'm going to start, I'm going to start on this end. Any questions?
I did have a question. So if this doesn't get, I'm sorry, if this doesn't get approved, what would be the next step to look at in terms of the next solution? Where would you guys go next?
That's that's something that we're wrestling with. So what we've talked about internally, and this hasn't been set, is that as we go into the budget cycle coming up in the spring, we will probably present two budgets. And those budgets will show what it would look like if a sales tax initiative is approved by the voters and what it would look like if it isn't. We anticipate just this next fiscal year, about 1.1 to 1.3 million dollars in a deficit. And so we're going to have to start cutting programs and services to get to that number.
And that's over and above what has already been cut?
Correct. Yeah.
I guess my next question, you wouldn't go down the line and then say, let's propose a property tax?
Pardon me, but would you bring the mic down a little closer so we can hear you?
You wouldn't go down the line and say, let's bring a increase in property taxes if this doesn't work?
No. The the council has been been very adamant that we don't want to pursue a parcel tax. Again, as Scott mentioned, if if we pursue only a parcel tax, that puts the full burden on that puts the full burden on us as property owners here in Calabasas. Whereas through a sales tax initiative, again, 60% of that, almost 60% of it, is paid by those who work here, visit, are tourists, come to the commons, whatever it is, dine, shop at our stores, fill up their tanks at gas, who are coming from out of town. And so we lose that opportunity to have that fair balance of that shared infusion of funds if we just go through a parcel tax. Great questions.
All right, anything else? No? Michael?
Thank you for your presentation. I do have a lot of questions. In our minutes tonight, it says that the building and safety department exceeded projected revenue last year by almost $1 million. I assume that's included in your numbers?
Correct.
Okay. Does the city do a reserve study to replace everything every three years, like an HOA, something like that?
I love that question. And let me, can I go back to your first one about the building fees? And Michael, maybe you want to answer this a little bit too. I'll start out, but so even though building and safety fees exceeded projections, those fees cannot be taken and used for sheriff services or for parks. There, it's by statute, those building fees have to cover the cost associated with the building and safety department. And Michael, do you want to add to that a little bit?
Absolutely, yeah, as Kenan mentioned. So if our building fees go up, we have a contract with a company that does all of our plan check and then a lot of our, not all, but a decent amount of building inspections. So as fees go up, our operational costs go up as well. And if we, if those fees or if the revenue keeps going up even more than that, we would have to consider either bringing in more contract work to handle that additional load or a new employee. So it's all operational costs, it doesn't benefit the city in any particular way.
Oh, it didn't sound like that in a minute, so I guess that, thank you.
And then if I, or do you want me to?
On the reserve study, you know, as an HOA, in an HOA, we have to do a reserve study every three years. Does the city have something like that?
Historically, the city had not done one of that. So we initiated that about a year and a half ago. And so right now, our projections are that we need about $2.8 million a year to start setting aside for our capital improvements. We've been fortunate over the last few years to either bring in grants or their outside monies. So those of you who have been paying attention and watched all of our parks be renovated in 2024, that was all paid for by outside funds, that was through ARPA, that was the, through the American Recovery Protection Act funds. The city brought in about $5.8 million. Had we not received those funds, that would have hit the general fund entirely. So again, we try to look for ways to use outside funds for these projects, and we've been able to be successful on this. But to maintain our roofs, our HVACs, our, whatever it is, you know, fill in the blank, we need about $2.8 million a year. And that's not counting any work on streets. Historically, we've been able to use what's called gas tax money for our streets. And, but if there's ever a project that exceeds what we have in gas tax monies, it taps into the general fund.
So how often will you be doing the reserve study?
So right now, the goal is to start setting apart this 2.8. We haven't even started doing that yet.
Oh, but that's actual money, I'm just talking about doing a study.
The study? Yeah, we'll just need to update it, we haven't set a timeframe of when we're going to update the study.
Okay, I mean, it just seems to me we have to do it every three years. How much has been allocated for this information outreach campaign, whatever you call this?
Great question. So we have two different groups that we are working with. So FM3 is doing the statistically valid survey. The council allocated $50,000 for those two studies, if we do two surveys. And then we have a second contract with a group that's helping with outreach and some of the graphics and the design on that. And that contract was $35,000?
And if we have to, and if it goes to a vote, that's it, or is there more that will be allocated?
If it goes to a vote to the people?
Yes.
No, that's it.
Okay.
Yeah, no, the only difference is if it goes to a vote in June, because we would be on the cycle, which is the primary cycle, we would have a greater cost in that consolidated election with LA County. And I think that cost was about $100,000 of additional funds, right? Yeah.
Okay. This is a subject that I brought up to the council, and it was actually raised first by our vice chair on the digital kiosk signs. And I know you've heard me mention it, but it was not, I'm not the one who initiated the subject. At the Americana in Glendale, Caruso has to share part of the digital kiosk sign revenue with the city of Glendale. And those things each generate about $100,000 a year, something like that. So if you have 10 signs, that's quite a bit of money. Why is it that the city doesn't want to share in that additionally generated money?
Commissioner, that is a great question that you need to ask your council members.
But I haven't gotten an answer, so.
Because that was in our recommendation as staff, that we should have a cost-sharing arrangement on the digital signage, and the council chose not to. So that's a question I think you need to ask the council.
Yeah, I've not gotten an answer and I've asked it. And I don't understand, is every other city does it who has, who's allowed digital kiosk signs? And I don't know why we're better than Glendale, maybe? We don't want Caruso's money? I don't get it. But anyway, there's another.
It's a policy decision, again.
Right, but I haven't gotten an answer. There's another kind of sign, like the kind that Santa Monica has, and Michael knows this. They have like public digital kiosk signs. And I spoke to the company that did theirs, and the guy lives in Woodland Hills, said it would be great to have one in Old Town, which could generate like $100,000 a year. And you could do a style, an Old Town style, the information would be the same information we get in our weekly newsletters, which is written by staff anyway. And it would also promote local businesses. Is there some reason why, is there a reason why council or anybody won't do something like that?
That's a great question for council, Commissioner.
But they don't, okay, they haven't answered me on that.
And if I may, Commissioner Harrison, one point, actually to Commissioner Steiner's question, which is, what if it doesn't pass? What if we don't move forward with the sales tax? The reality is, we'd have to come back and probably revisit things, everything from a digital kiosk to these marquees and so forth. So at that point, everything's probably on the table. Because when you forego $5.3 million annually, you're going to look under every rock and stone you can.
Right, but I think we're foregoing hundreds of thousands, if not a million dollars annually on that. And I have no comprehension of why, since it's additionally generated revenue as opposed to sales tax, which is, means money out of our pockets. You know what I mean? That's different. This is creating additional revenue. Anyway, the other, my concern about the Tennis and Swim Center is the dues. You know, and I know the council's looking at raising them. But I remember when I was on the council, one of the things I objected to was the senior discount. Because it's something like 40%. It's a big discount. And I think it should be related to income, and however you define it, as, you know, average income in the county or 200% or something like that. Because if you have a senior who's making $1 million a year, why would, why should that person, you know, at passive income, why should that person get a 40% discount? I mean, that's a substantial discount. Anyway, it's just a subject, again, maybe it's, you know, who knows? But see, I think you have to, I think you have to start looking at these things if you're going to go to the public and ask for them to share money. So anyway. You, we, I got your email today about canceling the two holiday parties. But how much like does the State of the City speech cost? How much, because there, Scott told me there was an outside person doing the narration, somebody in our staff wrote the whole thing, and it looked like a Hollywood production. How much does that cost? And is there a way to combine things? So for example, we are having, what do you call it? You know, reorganization meeting on December 10th. Why can't we have a holiday party, the same people will be there? Or why couldn't the reorganization meeting be at the same time as the State of the City, since the audience would be identical? Like, why can't we consolidate some of these?
Great suggestions on those points. To the point about the amount, for this budget that we went in, we cut both the reorg and the State of the City almost by half this last year, just to start reducing that down. Again, there are costs associated with that, but I think your points are well made on that.
Yeah, you could combine them, and you could even have a holiday party at the reorg. It wouldn't even, I don't think it would cost anything or much additional at all. So I also heard from the mayor that the city's considering canceling the pumpkin festival. And it's already down to one day a year, and I'm not sure why we're losing so much money. We used to have them at Paramount Ranch, and the Chamber of Commerce really put it on. I mean, the city, I guess, cosponsored it, Dennis would remember. But it wasn't that, you know, couldn't have been that expensive because this was a brand-new city and the city and the Chamber of Commerce did it. Why can't we find a way to make that less expensive? And two days instead of one?
Can I answer your question?
Yeah, sure, yes.
That was then, this is now.
Yeah, but we got to act on what's now.
You know, we had Calabasas days for a week.
Yes.
In 1992, '93 and '94.
We had sponsors from the car dealerships and so forth, and the Chamber.
What we're about here is not dealing in hundreds of thousands, but in millions of dollars. And that's what this tax measure is dealing with, and that's what TOT is looking at as well. And all the other issues that Kenan and others have asked us to think about and help come up with some ideas to make it work, so.
All right, but anyway, I hope you can look into that and get sponsorships or some other place, maybe? If it's too expensive to do it at our park, I don't.
In both of our study sessions with the council, that was one of the things that came up, was to really increase efforts from the staff to look for sponsorships. That was emphasized in both meetings. And so we've calculated that in. So even with projected revenues from sponsorships, we still see those million-dollar deficits, that structural deficit going forward.
No, I understand that, but for the pumpkin festival specifically.
Oh, that specifically.
Somehow, we did that 30 years ago without a lot of money.
What we found, I think, I like to put it in the context of something very personal. And I think if you were to go, if each of us go and look at our own household incomes and our budgets, things have changed dramatically over the last few years, right? You saw the numbers on electricity, you see the numbers on food, you see the numbers on gas, what we're paying at the.
Water.
You know, water rates and things like that. What you fill in your own homes is what we're filling exponentially as a city. Just to put some things in context, so we recently went out to bid, and part of this is happening is every time we go out to bid, the costs are coming in exorbitantly, much higher than they ever were before. So one example, we recently went out to bid for street sweeping. And the bid came in, and to make it feasible to fit in the budget, we had to reduce our service in half, but we're still paying more than what we were paying previously. So they're paying more higher labor costs, they're paying higher fuel costs, they're passing it on to us. So we're actually getting half the service for our street sweeping at more of the cost, just based on a competitive bid.
All right, so I guess you would have the same answer, because you also mentioned the 30th, 35th anniversary celebration and the FIFA soccer games or whatever next year. We're not going to do anything yet. In the past, we did do things for the Special Olympics and for, and for anniversaries. But again, maybe you can combine these with other things. Anyway, I want to, I live in Calabasas Park, and I did want to ask about the maintenance because I think it's not as good as it used to be. It's, there's, there's potholes today, you can, you know, and empty planters and unpainted crosswalks. You can go outside here and see it. So how much is on hand in, you have a couple of other sources of revenue. LMD-22, which is the landscaping and lighting district, which I think has millions of dollars in it. It's an ad valorem tax. And then there's that parcel tax that we have in Calabasas Park for LMD-22. And I know there are other landscape districts in the city as well. But just on those two, why, I guess plants are more expensive and labor's more expensive, but really, the streets don't look good, the planters don't look good? Is there some, isn't there enough money in LMD-22?
Yeah, so you hit it on the head. So again, all of those funds that you're talking about, the landscape maintenance district or the ad valorem, or the LL-AD, the landscape lighting assessment districts, those are, in essence, a proprietary or enterprise fund. You cannot use those for public safety, you cannot use those for operation of the city. So it has to be specifically within that zone, within that district. To your question of can they sustain some of these improvements? It all depends on that landscape lighting assessment district. Again, what we're seeing as we go out to bid on these and Newberry Park or Azteca or other vendors come in with their bids, we're seeing hundreds of thousands of dollars more for the same service. And so what happens, unless the property owners choose to assess themselves at a higher rate, we are now running thinner margins on those LL-ADS. Now with the ad valorem, there are funds available for that. And so we've tapped into that for some additional work in that ad valorem district. We are looking at some paving going forward, but we do have a street pavement management index that we adhere to. And so that's based on the quality of the streets and how long they're going to last. And those are addressed in that order.
Okay, so the LLMD or LLAMD, as you call it, that's the one that has the ad valorem tax and has millions in it. And I wish they could fix the streets a little better, because you can just go up to the roundabout and there's potholes every time it rains. So how is the city supposed to maintain all those new green and white stripes that are all over the city for bicycles and, you know, we get these grants. So our Public Works Planning Department, whatever, love to put those things in. But like, we're going to get a block on Muro Road, we're going to do some more on, we're going to put in a roundabout on Muro Road and Parkway, I mean, in Calabasas Road. And we're also extending a sidewalk from the Audi dealership to the roundabout, which to me, no one will walk about, walk on. I can't even imagine what that is for. Just because it's free, then you have maintenance issues. And all those green and white stripes that you can hardly figure out when you're driving on them have to be maintained. And we can't even maintain the crosswalk when you exit the city hall here.
Yeah, and those are great questions, but we're straying from the sales tax initiative because again, that's street funds or the gas tax funds that cover those, not the general fund.
Really? So, I mean, so then, what, okay, but again, then, I guess that's just a financial issue then. Why would we put in all those green and white stripes and needless roundabouts and sidewalks when we can't maintain them? Okay. The number of employees of the city has come up. I just today looked at the revenue for employees for Agora Hills, which is around 5 million, and for Calabasas, which is over 10 million. It's over twice as much. I don't know, is there a way to reduce that? I mean, because they're not that much smaller than we are.
Yes, they are.
They have 19,000 something people, we have 23,000.
Yeah, but they have seven square miles and we have 14.
And that makes the, and that doubles the number, the employment. Anyway, is there a way to look at that? I mean, they're ahead of us on planning issues. They're ahead of us on objective design standards, on ADU plans, climate action plans. So they're not behind, but they have half as much employment.
It's an interesting concept. What a lot of times folks fail to realize is that, you know, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. Just for example, they don't operate a library. They don't operate a senior center. They don't have a tennis and swim center, et cetera. They only have one commission, planning commission. Look at all of our commissioners, which then call for additional staff to come forth and do that. So, and the list just goes on and on, when we look at actual staffing levels and so forth. And if you probably look at the contractual numbers, it's likely that they farm out most of their services as opposed to Calabasas. The model here is we keep those services in-house, because we want that high level of service, that high touch level, as opposed to farming so much out. So I think if you did a deeper dive into those numbers, you would see that contrast. And it's just a matter, are they, are folks on our payroll or on someone else's payroll, right?
All right, well, can you do that deeper dive? Because I'm not an accountant. So, I mean, can somebody in our staff compare that? Because that's going to come up.
I think what Scott's saying is, I've gone down that rabbit hole, and it is, it is, it's something that you can never answer. So for example, Camarillo has its own water department. So if you start looking at how many employees Calabasas has compared to Agora, Westlake, Thousand Oaks, Camarillo, you can't do an apples-to-apples comparison because they have a water department, they don't have their own parks department, they have parks districts. We have our own library, they contract with LLSI or the. We have our own library, they contract with L L S I or the county. So once you start doing that, it's never an apple-apple to comparison. So there's other metrics you can look at, you can look at, and we're looking at those. But again, once you just start comparing straight numbers of, you know, employees per population or even employees per budget, it doesn't work. I had one of the, a resident talk to me about, hey, well, let's look at total budgets, you know, the number of employees compared to the city's total budget. Now, the problem with that is every city's total budget includes capital improvement projects. And so I could look at Thousand Oaks, and they could be spending twenty million dollars that year on an underground water line system. The next year, they might only spend five million on a street project. And so, but if you look at that total project and then try to base it on employees per total budget, you just, you have, there's so many variables that you're trying to pull out, it's not an equal comparison, you just can't do it.
But, okay, just, good, okay, thanks for your response. On the library, though, we get more revenue because we have our own library and they're part of the county. So I wouldn't use that as a comparison, but the other points you made are definitely.
Yeah, the reason we added it for the library is because you're talking headcount. Well, there's what, eight, eight library staff over there alone, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All set, okay. Your turn.
This county tax, or cap on the sales tax of ten point seven-five, where did that come from? Was that voted on by the people at some point? Was that, can you?
State law.
It's just state law, it's not, it's not a cap, okay.
So statewide, there's a cap on sales tax.
Okay.
Now, that is lower than ten point seven-five, but in L.A. County, what's happened is they've gone to the legislature, and they've been able to increase it beyond that cap. So the cap statewide is probably more in the seven point five percent range.
Okay.
But L.A. County has gone over and over again to increase that for costs associated with, for example, Measure M, Prop A, which are transit, Measure A, which is the homelessness initiative. And so because of that, they've extended that cap to the.
Okay, so it was our state representatives that established this cap, okay, okay.
At the request of L.A. County, yeah.
If the county wants to increase the sales tax, which seems to be, in a way, an ultimatum we're facing right now, because if we don't grab this one percent, they will, we're going to have to vote on that, right? That's going to be on the ballot, the county will propose. I mean, out of curiosity, what if both the city and the county are trying to grab this at the same time? I mean, is this why we need to vote on this right away? Is this why the city council is considering this right away next month?
Yeah, so, we love that question because we've wrestled with this. And so what we're hearing from our city attorney, so in the event that a county initiative and a city initiative were on the same ballot.
Yeah.
Now, if the county beats us to it and they pass, it's a done deal. But if we're on the same ballot, the way they look at it is the number of voters within the city that voted on each of those measures and which measure received the highest votes based on the voters of that city. And so, for example, if we have a measure, and let's say there's ten thousand people that vote, and, and the county measure gets five thousand votes, and ours gets five thousand and forty-five, ours wins out.
Okay, okay.
Great question.
Yeah, makes sense. This covered a lot of the sales tax issue, the T O T, the hotel tax. Let's just call it for the sake of clarity and ease. Is that something we're going to have to put to the voters, too? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so anytime a city wants to increase taxes, it has to be done by the vote of the people.
Okay. What are we asking for in terms of T O T? One percent increase, is that?
So what we would look at is probably a two or three percent increase. We are at thirteen percent, and we could go up to about fifteen percent. L.A. City is about fifteen percent, some of the other neighboring cities are at that. Westlake and Agora Hills are still at the twelve percent. So again, it puts us at a little bit higher rate than some of our neighboring cities, but it's doable.
Okay, is there a cap on that, state?
Not, no, not a statewide cap, it's really just then dependent on the market.
Okay, understood, understood. Have we done or looked into any surveys of actual business owners and how? I mean, I think we have an idea how they're going to perceive this, they're going to say no. But even with the few hotels we have, how many do we have? How many hotels do we, four?
Four hotels.
Four. I mean, I would strongly encourage, at the very least, to look into, even if it's not a survey, how much will be too much. I mean, everybody's being squeezed, everybody, on a personal business. And I guess municipal level, too, it's, it's getting scary. Okay, that was, those are just my points of clarity on the tax and what we'll be asking for. Except, one more on that, to declare a state of emergency, I mean, do we qualify to declare that state of fiscal emergency, sorry?
Correct, so our city attorney is looking into that, and there are certain criteria. Now, if we go back, and I won't go through the slides, but if you go back to that slide that shows that structural deficit, being a structural deficit alone creates that imminent need to do something. So that is part of the criteria.
Okay, that's my real, those answer my questions I had on what we were presented with today. To Commissioner Harrison's points and his theme of, let's try to find some money. You know, I grew up playing roller hockey in Deansa Park, we lost the league, the owner retired. It's sitting there, I'm driving sometimes an hour to get to Burbank to play my roller hockey. And I think that there is, there are people that will be willing to restart that league and maybe generate another fifty or something thousand dollars for the city every year. Again, it's, we're dealing with millions, not hundreds and fifty thousand dollar increments. But as you guys said, and I appreciate that, once you get to this point, you know, it's time to look under every single rock. So I'm not going to harp on that, I'm just going to, you know, encourage the city to look into taking bids, and not just taking bids, but taking bids seriously on that because I would love to not have to drive an hour to go play my hockey.
I hear you on that.
All right, thank you.
I talked too much tonight, let Bob talk.
He probably's not going to talk anymore?
No.
Let's hear from Dennis for a change.
Well.
Come on.
All right, gentlemen, Dennis, you're next in line, so you're up.
What I'm looking to do is deal with what can we do to help the cause. And right now, I can tell you that if we could figure out how to teach every property owner in Calabasas how to read their tax bill, that would be enough to persuade them to say that if we don't do this, and if the L.A. County does, they're going to take the money and you'll never see it again. But if you look at your tax bill and you realize that Measure W is a parcel tax on you already, and they've collected a billion, two hundred million dollars since nineteen, or twenty seventeen, when they passed it, and how much have we got in other Measure W in Calabasas?
Not much.
Anything?
I couldn't tell you right off.
I don't think anything, that's the whole point. That's just one part of your property tax bill. If you look at it, there is Measure H in L.A. County for housing. And one of the other things we're going to talk about is, at least I think, an overview of key new legislation affecting housing development projects. And we're sacrificing in that instance as well. There's opportunities in there, but that's going to take some strategic thinking, not just of consultants, but us that have to foot this bill. So that's L.A. County Measure H. L.A. City, H H H, has collected or gotten matching funds out of the state of something close to two point two billion. And who knows what benefit that's going to do for the city of L.A.? But we're affected by L.A. City and L.A. County because they burned down. I mean, the Palisades and Malibu fires, and the Woolsey fire, and all the fires that we've experienced here, that's changed the way the fire department works. And if you haven't been looking at your fire department bills, or your requirements, or you haven't been looking at the sheriff's charges for the services, they're not going to get any better. I mean, just heard from Kendon, those are the five billion-dollar settlement that L.A. County has to deal with. If they fixed up the L.A. River using Measure W, the L.A. River fix for watershed management or clean water is going to be fifty billion dollars from ten years ago estimate, what is it now? All the water that comes out of our watersheds here on this side of the hill go to Long Beach. And Measure W, which is a parcel tax on all of us that own property in Calabasas right now, it's there. There aren't very many opportunities to get anything other than maybe figure out how to get local return from all these charges that are being put on your tax bill. We're paying property, I mean, parcel taxes for Los Virginas, we're paying Los Virginas Unified School District, we're paying water charges to Los Virginas Unified or Municipal Water District and all their experimentation, all of which is very valuable for us. But if you look at that property tax bill, you'll see, and if you didn't get a notice from the folks at the L.A. County Sewer Maintenance District, my bill's going to go up a hundred and twenty-eight bucks at my house, and that's forever. And are you getting any of your service? Yeah. Is it going to be any better if you give them another twenty-eight, a hundred and twenty-eight bucks a parcel in Calabasas? Probably not. So there aren't very many opportunities for us to make any of the bills that we're paying on our property tax bill right now. I mean, I can go on, there's six other categories. So my concern is that we need to figure out how we, as a community, with our staff and with our commissioners, plural, and our council members, which are working on it day and night almost, we have an opportunity, I think, to educate the people who own property here, who should be entitled to all the money that we're contributing to all these county initiatives, get some of it here, at least proportionately speaking. And are we getting that? Absolutely not. Our sheriff bill is up, our fire bill is up, you got a home hardened now, and that's going to be god knows what. So all of that needs to be explained to everybody who owns a parcel in Calabasas, not just the residents. It has to be explained to all the commercial and industrial properties as well. Or tell me if I'm wrong, you know, Attorney Fox, you probably can help us understand, you know, what are the, what's the effect on the commercial and industrial parcels in Calabasas?
Actually, I don't know if I could respond to that question, so, yeah.
Do we know, Scott or Kendon?
Are you asking the question about sales tax? What would be the effect on?
No, I'm talking about parcel taxes that we're all, as homeowners or residents, in a property that is, you know, owned by somebody who has a parcel tax to pay, that's all going to L.A. County.
Dennis, if I can, I'm sorry, if I can step in here for a second. Is this all in, I'm just trying to understand the relationship. Is this all going back to better that we, as a city, grab that one percent? Rather than letting that, like, everything related to the parcel taxes essentially go to the county and others rather than to the city? Is that, is that where you're, is that where you're going?
But the sauce is, you know, what are we going to do to cover up the tainted meat that we're having to consume here? And the sauce is, put the sales tax measure on the ballot, on the June ballot, primary ballot, and hope for the best that, you know, we can beat the folks to the trough. So we get the one percent, which is going to be five million, six million dollars in sales tax revenue, and a lot of it's being paid by folks outside of the city anyway, which brings in revenue to the community and makes our community better. They like to shop here, or live here, or, you know, buy their cars here. All that stuff really makes a difference because it's a nice place to live. And let's keep it that way. And I'm sorry, Bob, if I've offended you with any of that.
That's all right, I'll respond.
I know.
All right, you're up.
So, conclusion is that we need to put this on the ballot, we need to go for one percent, and we need to help the people understand why it's important. And if you just look at your property tax bill, as a parcel owner and a, you know, a citizen of this fourteen square miles, it will be very clear to you that we have a crisis, that we can actually help remedy by being quick to respond and deal with resilience rather than resistance at this point.
Agreed, all right, Bob, you're up.
Okay, there are two issues at here, and they are not the same. One is the desire to get the sales tax, I can accept that. But there also is the issue of saving our city, and the sales tax will not do that. First of all, one percent sales tax, you're going to generate five million in revenue for the city? I don't think so. How much revenue overall would you have to have for the city to get five million? It doesn't compute, I'd like to see who calculated that. Two, historical trends. We need to address, we, the city, need to address what we can control, not what we can't control. We can control employees, we can control park landscape, we can't control electricity. We can only control sheriffs to a small degree, you know, do we want the coverage or you don't? But we, the stuff we can control, we're not controlling. Look at all the programs that we have, the senior center, tennis and swim center, what have you, the fancy brochures that come out. We are subsidizing non-residents. We need to have financial statements for each one of those, showing this program that we have, how much is it really costing us? Is it revenue-producing or is it negative? We need to really take a look at what is going on in the city. Michael said he's not an accountant, I was, more than that. And I know what can be done if the city is willing to do it. If you want to sell this to the people, this being the sales tax, you got to show that the city went all in. I saw your letter today, too, yes, it stopped costs going forward, but it didn't do anything for the cost that exists today. We need to look at that, you guys need to look at that and say, hey, what do we need to do to save our city? Because the sales tax alone is not going to do it, guys, it's just not.
Can I speak to that, Commissioner?
Absolutely.
Quickly, so the five point three is a solid number. That comes from H D L, that is our sales tax consultant, they work across the state, they are dialed in on this, they know their stuff, that is just an irrefutable number.
I'd like to see the calculation then.
Happy to do so, I can provide that.
Of course, you say a sales tax is based on revenues. You can do it yourself, if a city's going to get five million in sales tax, what kind of revenues it has to have for the city to get five million? It doesn't compute, it's mind-boggling.
But it's happening, and it already is happening, that's what we're saying.
In Calabasas.
Yes, correct, so we bring in right now almost seven million in sales tax, based on one percent. The reason we're only projecting five point three is there's some things that aren't captured with that additional one percent. So right now, we're bringing in close to seven million, based on that one percent. So if you're, to your point, there is a lot of money being spent in Calabasas that is generating that seven million dollars for us, based on one percent. That's based on, those are our budget numbers, you can look historically where we're at on our sales tax.
And just a brief comment, if I may, because it fits right here. I think that in order to continue to bring in that kind of revenue that generates those kinds of numbers on the sales tax, we need to maintain the quality of the city. And it, you know, you have to be very careful, it's a very difficult rabbit hole to go down when, when we get caught up in cut, 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 cut. So I think that, I think that a lot of attention needs to be put to evaluating, you know, what has been cut, what can be brought back, not deeper cuts, which is why I'm, I think that this, I think that this sales tax is, unfortunately, but it is a necessary thing at this point if we want to maintain the quality of our city. Because our fiscal issues have already resulted in costs, in cost-cutting. It's not that nobody has been looking at cutting costs, it's not that nobody has looked at cutting personnel, it's already happened. And we have to be very, very careful if we want to maintain the quality of this city about how much is being cut. And we need to find ways, obviously, to bring in the revenue to stop that bleeding. And I happen to think that, that. And I happen to think that, that, given difficult choices, obviously, that this, that the sales tax, the sales tax option is the one that, that needs to be, that needs to be pursued at this point. So, anyway, sorry to have interrupted that.
Okay. You worried about the reputation of the city, so am I. The city declares, declares a financial calamity, and its reputation is shot to hell, and it will not come back, despite what our chief financial officer said. That's baloney. The, the reputation of the city will be in the toilet once we declare a financial crisis. You don't, you don't think so? We just wait and see. This was the city on the hill, and it's going to be the city in the sewer. I'm not opposed to the sales tax, but not by saying, hey, we're in the toilet, and that's why we need it. That's what we have to do.
Saying that they're, saying that, that it's an emergency situation to get it placed on the ballot doesn't necessarily equate to, well, we're in the toilet.
If you attended the first meeting they had, you might not say that.
No. Well, different perspectives.
Yeah.
I think that would be on TV. I think that would be on the comedy shows. Calabasas declares fiscal emergency.
Yeah. Madam Chair, if I may. So if, if we declare a fiscal emergency, it doesn't mean that we're at this, this fiscal cliff. It's really a matter of projections. The reality that we have the structural deficit in and of itself allows us to declare such. So want to share that with you. The reality is that we, we rang the bell a couple of years ago. So I started in January 2024, and the studies were already in place for a sales tax measure. So this has come before the council, before, as Kinnon indicated. Now, there was, there was a study that was done, or the survey, the same survey that was just done two weeks ago, and those numbers came back maybe very, at 51% that, that it would likely pass. So the council then, at that point, opted not to proceed with the, with the sales tax measure. That's fine. We were still in a structural deficit. So then internally, just so you know, that's when we started making big decisions, such as the reduction of force, and we off-boarded our entire communications department. That saved the city nearly a half a million dollars, $433,000 in that one action. Furthermore, we no longer record commission meetings outside of planning commission and, of course, city council. That action alone saved us $50,000 a year by not recording all of the environmental commission, CTC commission, et cetera. So we are implementing fee studies. So just last night, online, there's a tennis and swim fee study that, that occurred. We've, we've implemented planning fees back in May of this year, all under the auspices of revenue generation and so forth. Kinnon has done the hiring freeze. Things in our control, to your point. There's a hiring freeze in place until December of 2026 for the next year, and that's effective immediately. Back to the pumpkin festival, the little, small, little things. We increased our booth fees. We increased our, our entry fee this, this last year. We're doing everything in our power to do that. And again, back to that chart that I shared, things in our control, the fact that we've only increased by 1% our, our salaries and benefits over 10 years, 1% each year to about 13 and a half percent, is phenomenal. That is absolutely, by the, by the city manager having, being bold and, and doing his due diligence in terms of what is in our control. At my core, I don't want to ever raise taxes, ever. But the reality is, in, in this situation with the structural deficit and so forth, it's prudent for us to do exactly that. And is the one thing that kind of rings a fair with everybody is that let's keep it local. At $8.25 a month, I'm willing to pay that to keep Calabasas Calabasas.
Commissioner? Oh. Can I speak a little bit to your point, too, as well? I hear you on what you're saying, and especially with the city needing to do its part, and I'm glad that Scott reiterated that. What we hear often is that people want to see more staff cuts. When, when they talk about cuts, they, they want to see fewer employees. And so I think that goes back to Commissioner Harrison's question. We're doing that, and you have my word on that. Anecdotally, let me tell you something. So we had an employee resign just a few weeks ago, and the supervisor for that employee came in and said, Kendon, we need to fill this vision, that position. Can I post, it was on a Friday, can I post on Monday? And I said, I'm writing a hiring freeze memo right now. You coming in the doors, like, the perfect timing. We can't hire that. So we are not filling that position. I issued the hiring freeze notice, and another director came to me and said, we just got an employee who says they're retiring. We need to fill that position. I'm sorry, we're not filling that position. Just in two weeks, we've had, within the hiring freeze memo going out, we had two employees and two positions that we're not filling. And so more of those will come.
To that, to that point, so we recently hired a communications manager. Someone brought that up and said, well, it looks like you're, you're spending more. You, you save $433,000 by doing a reduction of force with the old team, but then you backfill with a communications manager. I said, great, great point. Here's what happened. You guys remember Lewis, right, in Public Works, our Public Works superintendent? He's the, the all-star. When he retired this year, rather than backfill his position, we opted to move those dollars over to hire a communications manager. So it's cost-neutral. Actually, there's cost savings because, thank you, is a top step and so forth. So at every, every turn, we're, we're very conscious of, of not increasing our costs. So just want to share those examples with you.
Okay. The analogy was made earlier by Kendon comparing what the city is going through to what a homeowner goes through. But a homeowner can't just say, oh, I'm going to go out and get my salary higher. I have to live with what I have. And that's why I say you got to address the things you can control directly.
Yeah, we are. You have a feeling that.
Yeah, I'm not saying you're not. I've seen, that's what it's got to be focused on. Again, I'm not imposed to a sales tax increase, but I am deadly afraid of a fiscal emergency going out and what it will do to the city.
And I think that's a fair question.
Sorry, Commissioner, my mic was, I think that's a fair question. The, the council is going to have to wrestle with that decision of whether they, they choose to move forward with a fiscal emergency. Now, what we've seen other cities have done, and this is not too many, but what we've seen is they've declared that fiscal emergency, they've moved forward with the voter initiative to the people. If it's passed, then they rescind that, that fiscal emergency. You've solved the problem, right? If you now have a, a source of new revenues coming in. So again, it's, it's going to be a very tough decision for the council to wrestle with that of whether or not they are going to move forward with that. One of the things I think that's beneficial to us as residents, I'm a voter, I live here in town, is that that decision has to be made unanimously. It has to be a 5-0 vote. So if there is somebody sick or somebody who's on vacation the night that that vote is taken, and it's a 4-0 vote, it doesn't count. All five council members have to vote for a fiscal emergency. If there is one voice who says, I'm not comfortable with this, there's no fiscal emergency.
We had one.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We, we've talked preliminary about it. We haven't had the vote. And, and you've seen that, those who are paying attention to the meetings, there is some concern about that. The, the fiscal emergency may not be declared. That's, again, a, a very tough decision up to the council.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. We have anything further from any of the commissioners? All right. Thank you very much for an excellent presentation and some really good, direct answers to the questions that have been raised. We really appreciate it. Dennis?
When Kendon asked us to come to the workshop, the first workshop, the challenge that he gave us is help us find creative ways to increase revenue. That's the assignment in order to maintain what Bob and Michael and Matt, all of us are saying the same thing. We don't want to decrease our effectiveness, but we want to increase our ability to afford that effectiveness, or at least encourage the community members to support anything that we can do to keep the quality of life going with a limited amount of additional money. And that limited amount of additional money isn't going to come our way if the county comes in and decides that they want the 1%. And then we're out of luck because it doesn't come here. And we can't raise our property tax share. That's not the way it works. We've tried all that stuff. We've tried annexations, in fact, to improve our, you know, our territory, which we originally declared back in 1991, or 1988, really. So there are forces outside of our control that have a great impact on us. Look at your property tax bill. I hope that some of the people in the community are listening to this presentation and these comments, because if you don't realize what you're already paying and, and what you are getting less of because you're paying that greater amount of money, then you don't understand the problem that we're facing and what our people are trying to resolve, including everything that you and I might say. Yeah? It's, we're all in the same canoe. There's a hole in it. That doesn't mean that any of us is safe.
All right. Thank you. And we are going to move on to item number four on our agenda.
Can we have a five-minute break? Or?
Yeah, five minutes. We're back at 7:45. All right, we're back. We are on to item number, can I steal your? Item number four on the agenda, and that is an overview of key new legislation affecting housing development projects. And I believe our city attorney will be making the presentation.
That is correct. And I don't know if Glenn is able to pull it up. Oh, there it is. Okay. So what is the, the reason for this presentation? Well, over 2025, there's been a flood of new legislation coming from the state legislature dealing with housing and dealing with various. dealing with housing and dealing with various aspects of housing. And in addition, while I was working on this and discussing it with, with Michael, a case came down recently that really affects housing elements throughout the state of California. So thought it would be useful to talk about some of the key legislation so that you understand what it is in case you were hearing about it out there and whether or not it affects Calabasas. Some, some of it does, some of it does not. And so we're going to go through it. I realize it's almost 7:50, so I'm going to try to move as quickly as I can through it. If you have questions, you know, obviously happy to try and answer the questions, but we'll go through the material and hopefully we can do it relatively quickly. So we're going to talk about amendments, recent amendments to the Housing Accountability Act, amendments to California Environmental Quality Act, amendments to the Subdivision MAP Act. We're going to talk about SB 79, which relates to new higher-density development around new transit, types of transit stations. And then we're going to talk about the new commune DTLA versus City of Redondo Beach, which is a case that will be potentially impacting housing elements throughout the state. So why don't we start with the Housing Accountability Act? I don't know if you're familiar with this. It is an act that really places quite a few restrictions on cities when they're considering whether or not to approve housing development projects. And those are defined specifically within the Housing Accountability Act. And it is, to simplify, it's, it's a project that has at least two, two units. So I briefly talk about it on the next slide. To summarize it, a city is permitted to impose only objective standards on housing development projects. There is a strict 30-day deadline to identify any inconsistencies with the city's general plan zoning or other regulations. If those aren't identified, the city cannot require those in, as, compliance with those as conditions on the project. If project is consistent with the city's general plan, zoning, and other regulation and complies with a city's objective development standards and requirements, then a city may disapprove a housing development project only if it finds the project will cause a specific adverse impact and there's no feasible way to mitigate that specific adverse impact. And just to build upon that, the legislature stated that it expects that there will be few circumstances where a city will be able to find a specific adverse impact. And it's different than a significant impact in the context of SEQA. It's a much more exacting requirement and a higher standard to establish a specific adverse impact. So basically, what the Housing Accountability Act is, is compelling cities to, to basically approve housing development projects. So let's turn to the, the enforcement if a city improperly disapproves a housing development project. So I've given some examples of what constitutes a disapproval under the Housing Accountability Act. The first is what you would typically think of. Votes or takes final administrative action on a proposed housing development project application and the application is disapproved. That would be what you'd normally think as a disapproval. But the Housing Accountability Act and recent amendments has added a diff, other things that would constitute a disapproval. So F1, which is the second one, determines that an application for a housing development project is incomplete pursuant to subdivision A or B of 65943, which is the Permit Streamlining Act, and includes in that determination an item that is not required on the city's local agencies or the local agencies submitted requirement checklist. So under the Permit Streamlining Act, the city has to have a checklist to tell applicants exactly what they need to provide to the city and exactly what they need to do for their project. And if the city disapproves or determines that an application is incomplete and bases it on something that's not on that list, the city can be sued for improperly disapproving the project. So that's another example of a disapproval. Another, makes a written determination that a preliminary application has expired for reasons other than those set forth in the relevant statute. And that's Government Code Section 65941.1. So briefly, what a preliminary application is, is an applicant can submit an application that provides general information about a project, a qualifying project. And if they submit that complete preliminary application, they get to vest that project into all of the rules and regulations that are in effect at the time that application, that preliminary application is filed. So long as they file a full application within six months, and then they have some specific times to complete that full application. So what this is basically saying is if the city improperly determines that the preliminary application has expired for reasons other than what is permitted under the statute, the city can be sued for, quote, "disapproving" the project. So that's another example of what a disapproval is. And then the other example is in the context of SEQA, which, you know, the Housing Accountability Act used to never even address SEQA. It said you have to comply with SEQA. But now what the Housing Accountability Act says is that, for instance, if a city improperly determines that a project is not exempt pursuant to either statutory or categorical exemption and fails to support that with, quote, "preponderance of the evidence," the city can be sued for, under the Housing Accountability Act, for improperly disapproving the project. So there's a lot of ways that a city can be sued under the Housing Accountability Act for, quote, "improperly disapproving" a project. Commissioner?
Can you give us an example of, in our scope of authority and interest, what a project is? What is a project?
Yeah. So in the context of a housing development project, it's a, it's a project of more than two, to develop more than two residential units. So it could be a large multifamily residential project, such as various of the projects that you have dealt with over the years here.
And are we allowed to talk about specific projects that we've approved so our people understand what we're talking about? Or do we have to deal with all this legalese in order to try to get to some kind of understanding of what our next steps are?
So I would recommend that we not speak about particular projects that are currently under process with the city, but generally what we're talking-
Not in process, but that we've already had to approve and are already recorded and that they've been financed and then they're reduced in size in order to meet the optimum objectives of the, of the project proposer as opposed to the, you know, the agreed-upon effects that are going to come from all the benefits that come from that or all the deleterious effects that we wind up having to cope with as a small city?
I, I, I'm not sure that we would want to go into the details on particular projects for purposes of this presentation, but if you want to talk about a specific one-
I understand, but I'm talking about a kind of project without talking about any specific project.
Okay.
Because, you know, we're being asked to deal with mixed use, mixed-use zoning and mixed-use territories and law and impacts on the community are kind of a, you know, an iceberg because you get to see what the project looks like, whatever it is, but there's nine-tenths of that iceberg sitting there in your ice-cold water for a long, long time.
So a mixed-use residential project, just for purposes of our discussion, would be covered under the Housing Accountability Act. So the city, in evaluating that project, would be subject to the requirements of the Housing Accountability Act and the restrictions and regulations set forth.
Well, and we've been working really hard for the last two years to try to anticipate what that could bring to our city of Calabasas.
Yeah.
And our staff has been dealing with it, and so have you and all of us.
Right.
Is there at some point where we can actually take a breath and say, well, here's what we've accomplished and what we're gonna, what we're gonna have to face with all the new laws that they're trying to throw at us out of Sacramento right now?
There may be that opportunity in the future. And one of the reasons for this presentation is perhaps to keep you apprised of the pressures and the restrictions that are being placed upon a staff and the city to avoid being challenged through litigation because of the legislation and, and as it continues to limit the city's discretion over these projects.
Thank you.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yes. So you, thank you. You, you said that we can have objective standards is, I'm sorry, is the time to evacuate an objective standard? So there's a project in Lost Virgin where some people will not be able to evacuate. Is that an object, it can be-
It could potentially, but it has to be a written standard saying that you need to, for instance, you need to establish that evacuation can occur within a particular timeframe.
So can we do that?
Potentially.
Okay.
But it, it's something that obviously requires study because all those standards have to be supported with substantial evidence or they'll be challenged as being arbitrary. But yes, I mean-
No, there is, there is evidence. So, any, okay. All right.
Okay. I do want to just interject on that one to make sure that we're all clear on that issue. If a standard doesn't exist today, but there's already applications that are in process, they're essentially vested with the standards that were in effect when the application was filed. So we could work on that kind of stuff, but it won't impact anything that's currently in the process.
No, I understand. I just wanted to know if that's an objective standard?
Yeah.
And if so, then I think we should have adopted one.
So, yes, so-
Okay.
But we can, we can go on. So SEQA, again, the Housing Accountability Act affects our SEQA determinations as well. So, you know, a, there can be private enforcement and of course enforcement by HCD and the Attorney General. And HCD is the housing, the, the housing and community development department. So for private enforcement, who can sue the city for violation of the Housing Accountability Act? Well, of course, the applicant, a person eligible to apply for residency in the housing development or emergency shelter that has been denied or disapproved or certain housing organizations. So there's quite a few people that would have standing to sue the city for disapproval of the project. And then the available remedies relate to if the city acted in bad faith, we can be subject to fines, reasonable attorney's fees, a builder's remedy project if jurisdiction does not have a housing element in substantial compliance with this code, the Housing Accountability Act. And then enforcement by HCD. If HCD determines that we have improperly disapproved a project or violated the Housing Accountability Act, they can refer it to the Attorney General, who can then proceed with litigation against the city. So needless to say, there's quite a bit of potential for various people challenging the city for failing to comply with the Housing Accountability Act. And unfortunately, it's, it's not theoretical. There are lawsuits all over the state right now being, where cities are being challenged for, quote, "violating" the Housing Accountability Act. So the big, one of the big changes to the Housing Accountability Act is they made a change to what is called builder's remedy. And I don't know if you've heard that term out there, but I briefly want to explain what it is and then talk briefly about what changes and guardrails have been placed on it. Prior to January 1 of 2025, there was a, there is a provision in the Housing Accountability Act that says that if a city does not have a housing element that has been certified as substantially compliant with state housing laws, then projects that contain a certain amount of affordable housing that are submitted to the city do not have to comply with the city's general plan or zoning. And originally before January 1, 2025, that include development standards. So they could come in with a project on a single property zones for single-family residential and they could propose a 25-unit multifamily residential unit. And the city would not be able to deny that based upon inconsistency with the general plan or with the zoning for the site. So that was before January 1st of 2025. In January of this year, they amended the Housing Accountability Act and they put some guardrails on that. And, and I, basically, they're still pretty significant. So for instance, now the maximum density can be no greater than 50% greater than the minimum density deemed appropriate to accommodate the housing in the jurisdiction or three times the density allowed by the general plan, zoning ordinance or state law, whichever is greater, or the density that is consistent with the density, with the density specified in the housing element. So they place some guardrails on the amount of density, but it's still pretty significant what they can propose with these types of builder's remedy projects. And, and there's more information there about builder's remedy. And if you have any questions about that, happy to answer those. But builder's remedy is still out there. And the other thing to keep in mind is there were many cities that were subject to builder's remedy because they were having difficulty getting their housing element certified by, by HCD. And so most of the cities now have housing elements that have been certified. So you'd think, okay, well, builder's remedy isn't going to be that big a deal because they have their housing element in place. But HCD has also beefed up their enforcement operation and they are being very aggressive in informing cities that they, who they believe are not complying with the Housing Accountability Act or state housing laws, that one remedy they can pursue is to decertify their housing element. And therefore, the city would, that city would be subject to builder's remedy once again. So just because a city has a housing element that has been certified as compliant with state housing laws, those cities still have to be very vigilant to ensure that they continue to comply with the state housing laws so that HCD does not say, we think that you are, we should decertify your housing element in how you address certain issues. Yes?
John, at the very bottom of page two of section D, if a half-mile of a major transit stop, you know, we're not within a half-mile of a major transit stop that I'm aware of. And has that been used against any of our cities in our council of governments?
I don't know if it's been used in any cities within your local council of governments. I know that Calabasas does not have major transit stops and so a lot of those requirements don't apply. We're going to talk about SB 79, about, about development around tier one and tier two transit stations. And the only reason I'm bringing it up is to just advise you that you don't have any tier one or tier two transit stations at Calabasas. So you, at this point, you don't need to be concerned about SB 79. But I don't know about other cities within your local council of governments, so.
I don't either. I don't think there are any, but that's another story.
So on, with regard to the builder's remedy project, before I had mentioned that prior to January 1 of 2025, a city could not require development standards that would have applied to the site if they had a builder's remedy project. But the new changes to the builder's remedy do allow for the imposition of objective, quantified, written development standards on these projects so long as those standards do not make the project infeasible. And the standards need to apply- And the standards need to apply, be based upon the project that has been proposed. So if, if they're proposing a multifamily residential project on a property zone, single family, the city would have to impose development standards that apply to multifamily projects, not to single-family projects. So that does provide the city the opportunity to impose development standards, but it's still very restrictive on the city's ability to impose development standards. So the next big change came in the amendments to the California Environmental Quality Act. And the one that you probably heard about is the new statutory exemption that basically exempts many multifamily housing development projects from CEQA. And that is set forth in Public Resources Code 21080.66. And in our previous presentations I've given to you, we talked about the difference between a statutory exemption and a categorical exemption. And under a statutory exemption, if you meet the requirements of that statutory exemption, there are no exceptions, so, to the, to the use of that exemption. So if you comply, you, you are, you are good to go. And you do not have to comply with CEQA any further. So this new statutory exemption applies not only to housing development projects as defined by the Housing Accountability Act, but it potentially also applies to single-family residences. And the other thing, too, is it applies to projects on sites as large as 20 acres. And previously, there's a categorical exemption that would allow for projects that were on sites as large as five acres. So now we've increased the size of an exempt project to a site as large as 20 acres, which can be a pretty significant size. Next slide. So it needs to meet certain requirements related to being within an urban area. And I describe what those areas are in the slide, next slide. It needs to be consistent with the city's general plan and zoning. If the zoning and general plan are not consistent with one another, a project is deemed consistent with both if the project is consistent with one. The approval of density bonus incentives or concessions, waivers or reductions of development standards and reduced parking ratios pursuant to the state's housing, state housing laws related to density bonus are not grounds for an inconsistency determination. So any density bonus incentives that are given or related to density bonus cannot be used to determine that a project is not consistent with general plan or zoning. Density requirements. So it does have certain minimum, maximum density requirements for a city within a non-metropolitan county and for a non-metropolitan county that has a micropolitain area, at least 15 units per acre. For us, and I'll just go down to the bottom, for a jurisdiction in a metropolitan county, the density has to be at least 30 units per acre. So for a project to fall within this exemption, they'd need to meet those density requirements. So it's really encouraging a pretty significantly dense projects. Next slide. There are restrictions on where these projects can occur. They cannot occur in, of course, areas that are designated wetlands and areas that are habitat for protected, special status, rare, threatened or endangered species, within a very high fire hazard severity zone, unless on sites that have adopted fire hazard mitigation measures pursuant to existing building standards or state fire mitigation measures applicable to the development as specified. My understanding is that LA County has adopted those mitigation measures and that Calabasas has also adopted those. So the fact that most, if not all, of Calabasas is within a severe high-fire hazard severity zone would not restrict the use generally of, of this exemption. Cannot be on hazardous waste sites unless certain requirements are met. Next slide. And unique for this exemption is they've established a unique special tribal consultation process. And it's set forth here. It allows additional time for the tribes to request consultation. It allows tribes to require certain mitigation measures, including monitoring of ground disturbance activities before. Those would be the subject of negotiation between the city and the tribe. And now, under this, if this exemption's being used, the tribe can mandate it under these requirements. Next slide. And I go into more detail about the tribes noticing requirements and the like, but for purposes of this, just understand that there is a unique tribal consultation process that needs to be complied with for the use of this exemption. Next slide.
Sorry, do the tribes have to be local tribes? I mean.
They have to be tribes that are culturally affiliated with the area where the project is located. So your staff.
Who would that be for us?
Excuse me?
Who would that be for us?
Maybe Glenn or Tom can talk about the tribes that you deal with in the city.
We have, we have a list of tribes that have been, that have requested to receive these kind of consultations.
Okay.
And we go through the, there's a state agency that also manages that as well. And we consult with them, and they sign up through that process.
So we're kind of in the middle between the, what do they call them? The Tongva and the Chumash or whatever, so, but it could be.
There's about at least a dozen tribes.
Okay, all right.
Right, so any one of them can require a consultation. The process is relatively quick. It needs to be completed within 45 days of the request or the start of the consultation process unless the tribe asks for one 15-day extension. So it moves pretty quick. Next, next slide. Again, as I mentioned, the tribe can require certain conditions to be placed on the project to address potential impacts to tribal cultural resources. Next slide. So then, the, the interesting thing about this exemption is it then states, it also resulted in a change to the Government Code section that, that sets forth when a city has to, quote, approve a project after its application has been deemed complete. And what this requires now is that a city has to approve the project within 30 days of the, of the conclusion of the tribal consultation process. So that would include any hearings that would have to come before the planning commission or the city council. Anything, all of that has to be completed within 30 days unless the applicant agrees to a one-time extension of up to 90 days. So not a lot of time has been provided for cities to process these applications that are subject to this exemption. Next slide. So then, the, the next thing the legislature did is they established a new tool to streamline the environmental analysis by permitting partial reliance on certain exemptions. So we've talked about the statutory exemptions, those that are established by the state legislature. We have the categorical exemptions that have been established by the Department of Natural Resources. And basically, what this new tool, under the Public Resources Code 21080.1, allows is if a project would, would meet the requirements of its statutory exemption, except it isn't able to meet one of the requirements of that statutory exemption and certain categorical exemptions, and we'll talk about those briefly, then they, the applicant and the city need only do the analysis of the potential impacts of, from failure to meet that one requirement. So I'll give you an example. Under the class 32 categorical exemption, one of the requirements is that the site has to be five acres or less in size. So let's say the project is on a site that's six acres, but they meet all the other requirements for that exemption, then all they would have to do is analyze the potential environmental effects of a project being larger than five acres. So it has the potential to significantly streamline the environmental review for certain projects. And so that's another tool that was adopted, and that went into effect as of July 1 of this year. Next slide.
John, do you know whose bill that was that set up this set of conditions under B 2 and number 32 in particular?
On B 1 and B 2, on the class, for the class, the categorical exemptions? Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah. Whose bill was it?
I do not recall, you know, Scott Wiener up in San Francisco has been involved in a lot of these pieces of legislation, and he's, anything dealing with housing and CEQUAs. So I would expect that he may very well have been certainly a co-sponsor of it, but I can find out for you. It's.
It would be helpful, yeah, because if, if we have somebody that can speak to the conditions in this community versus the conditions in San Francisco that he's trying to remedy with all of his legislation, that might be something that we would look at.
Yeah, I agree. So turning to the categorical exemptions to which this would apply, the class 1 through 5, and a lot of the single-family projects that are considered by this commission fall within, I believe, the class 1 categorical exemption. The other one that is utilized quite often is the class 32 categorical exemption, which is for infill projects of five acres or less. So the, the types of categorical exemptions that this can be used with really are geared towards housing projects of various sizes. So the goal again is to streamline the CEQA review for housing. Next slide. And we, we just talked about that. This allows for limited environmental review. Next slide. So one restriction is that this new streamlining tool cannot apply to a distribution center, oil and gas infrastructure, a project located on specified natural and protected lands or a project that is not similar in kind to the projects listed in the statutory or categorical exemption. So some very limited restrictions on how this streamlining tool can be used.
John, can we get help with our staff to identify where all of these pipelines are? Because there's pipelines running through our community all over, both north and south of the 101 and throughout the entire community of the COG as well. Is there a map that we have currently that identifies those oil and gas and other utility infrastructure pieces?
I, I do not know that, and we can certainly ask staff.
Is there something, Michael, that we can obtain?
Yeah. So I guess the point here, though, is that if this exemption could not be used in a way that would facilitate any changes to the, those facilities, so.
Calabasas Road has an oil pipeline on it.
Yeah.
I mean, what does that do for the future of Calabasas Road all the way out to Las Virgenas from here? I don't know. And can we learn about that?
Well, it just means that we would potentially have to do some additional CEQA analysis. But on a project, by project basis, we do ask for a title report to show any easements. And if we can, if we see an easement that includes an oil pipeline or some other infrastructure, then it just means that this particular exemption tool wouldn't be available to them.
Well, it affects our community by, you know, what the oil pipeline might allow on Mulholland Drive at Mulholland Highway. Just, you know, a block away from Gelson Shopping Center, there's an oil pipeline. And if LA City wants to develop a multi-housing unit there despite the fact that there is an oil pipeline there, you know, or there's maybe even Native American remains that are in a worship site or something like that in that vicinity, which is theorized, what does that do for any of this stuff we're talking about right now?
Well, I think it would potent, well, you'd have to look at whether or not it would result in the project not being the type and kind of projects for which the statutory or categorical exemption was to be used for. So those kind of things can be considered in determining whether or not it's appropriate to use the streamlining tool by evaluating what the existing conditions are and whether or not a project would exacerbate or cause some potential public health and safety issues if the project went forward.
I think it would be very helpful to us in dealing with this if we had, you know, mapping for the oil and gas distribution systems in our city of Calabasas.
Okay. Noted. So I'll ask staff, and we can find out if we have additional information on that.
Develop our strategy, clearly.
Other notable new exemptions, a rezoning that implements the schedule of actions contained in an approved housing element. So one of, one of the requirements under housing elements is that you generally have to ensure that you have enough housing inventory sites for various affordability levels. And often, it's, you're required to rezone property to ensure that you have those sites available. It used to be that you'd have to do CEQA in order to implement the zoning, and this has eliminated that requirement, which makes a lot of sense from my perspective. The exemption does not apply to a rezoning that would allow for the construction of a distribution center or for oil and gas infrastructure as, as we just discussed before with regard to the streamlining tool. Next slide. Wildfire risk reduction projects, including projects for prescribed fire, defensible space clearance and fuel breaks that meet certain requirements. Next slide. Any activity or approval necessary for incidental to planning, design, site acquisition, construction, operation or maintenance of public park or non-motorized recreational trail facilities funded by a specific source. So that could be helpful to facilitate park development and trails. The next change we're going to talk about are amendments to the Subdivision Map Act, which, as of January 1, included ministerial approval of small urban subdivisions. And that's set forth in the Subdivision Map Act, which is Government Code Section 664, 1, 0 and following. And basically, what this allows for is a subdivision of 10 lots or less located either on multifamily residential development that is no larger than five acres or on vacant land that is no larger than 1.5 acres, and the lot is substantially surrounded by qualified urban uses. Next slide. Interestingly enough, this one, this one says that it is not permitted within a very high-fire hazard severity zone, but it does not provide the same exception that we talked about earlier about the adoption of mitigation measures by, you know, the fire marshal and the like. So for, for Calabasas, this, at this time, this new ministerially approved. the like. So for, for Calabasas, this, at this time, this new ministerially approved small subdivision cannot occur. So this would not apply to Calabasas, of course.
Believe me, we've, we've had requests or inquiries about using this, so we are lucky that we're able to, that we're exempted from this one.
Yeah, so that, but I will just say, at this time, but as we're finding, is the legislature has a propensity to modify legislation on, rather quickly. So we need to continue to follow and see if they change this limitation to have it reflect the exceptions that are provided in other legislation. Next slide. So SB 79 was adopted and signed by the governor on October, in October of this year, and it allows for the ministerial approval of housing developer projects near type or Tier 1 and type or Tier 2 transit stations. So just a Tier 1 transit stop is heavy rail, so we're talking BART, we're talking the Metro B and D lines, high-frequency commuter rail. Tier 2 is the light rail, like the A-line, other light rail, high-frequency commuter rail, or bus rapid transit. And, and the proximity zones are one-half mile of a transit stop if in city with population greater than 35,000, or one-quarter mile of a transit stop if in a city with a population of 35,000 or less. So because we're located in LA County, we are considered to be a, a transit county. So this legislation would apply in LA County, but again, Calabasas is not near any station that will qualify as either a Tier, Tier 1 or Tier 2 station. So the types of ministerially approved projects that are allowed for under SB 79, at this time, could not occur in Calabasas. So if you hear about SB 79, just know that it's not going to affect Calabasas at this time. It's going to affect other communities. It's going to affect San Dimas and Glendora and other cities. Redondo Beach, where they're getting a new extension of the C-line. So it's going to affect other communities, but at this time, it's not going to affect Calabasas. Yes? Commissioner Harrison?
I just like the rabbit transit. I think that's, that's cute.
Next slide. So the final thing I wanted to talk about is the new Commune DTLA versus City of Redondo Beach case. And this is a case that involves overlay zones, and I don't know if you were involved in the adoption of Calabasas's housing element. Some of you probably were. And overlay zones are utilized in order to assist in ensuring that a city has adequate inventory of housing sites for various affordability levels. And basically, what many cities did, and what the Housing and Community Development Department of the state blessed, is the, the cities that are completely built out would place an overlay zone, a residential or mixed-use residential overlay zone, over a property that is currently where the underlying zoning is commercial, or light industrial, or something to that effect. And that overlay zone would provide for the densities that are required under state housing laws. And HCD said, that's fine, you've done what you need to do. You need to make sure that you have, through the use of this overlay zone that goes over underlying zoning, you have now sufficient inventory of sites that could potentially develop into housing. And the underlying zoning remains in place. So the owner of that property can continue to operate their commercial establishments, or they can decide, you know what, we want to redevelop the site, we want to put a mixed-use project on the site with residential, or just go full residential. They have the flexibility to do that. And that's been done throughout the state of California. Many cities that are built out use that as a tool to put residential overlay zones over property that was pre, or the underlying zoning was commercial or industrial. And this case that just was decided in September of this year said that doesn't work. And basically, what they have stated is that because in Redondo Beach, they had an overlay zone over area that, where the underlying zoning was commercial, the overlay zone didn't specifically comply with Government Code Section 65583.2H2, which says, these sites, meaning the sites that need to be available for housing, shall be zoned with a minimum density and development standards that permit at least 16 units per acre at a density of at least 16 units per acre in jurisdictions and sub写着 includes 1 and the like. But the point of all of this is, the court said, because you have underlying zoning of commercial or industrial, you did not meet the minimum residential density requirement on the site. It had to allow for residential of 16 units, and because the site can continue to operate as a commercial site, you haven't met that requirement. And basically, the court stated that all of those overlay zones that have been used in the manner that Redondo Beach has used the overlay zone are invalid and do not comply with state housing laws. But before you answer, I want to point out, and Michael can talk about this further, though the City of Calabasas adopted an overlay zone, Calabasas did it a little differently. The underlying zoning in Calabasas already was zoned residential and met the minimum density requirements, and the overlay zone was used to provide more of a ministerial approval process for those types of projects.
Are you sure even the parking lot here, that was residential?
Yeah, this area, the parking lot and all along Calabasas Road has been zoned mixed-use since, I believe, 2008.
Oh, okay.
That was in our general plan.
Even the parking lot over there?
Yes.
All right. I know the commons was mixed, but-
So a lot of cities have been very concerned about this case, obviously. Some, some of our other cities are very concerned, especially in light of the fact that HCD blessed the use of the overlay zones-
Right.
...to be used this way. And so they just-
Is that on appeal, or is it-
They just filed the petition for review to the Supreme Court, the City of Redondo Beach did. So it'll be interesting to see how that plays out. But again, you may have heard about this case. It may have been in the LA Times in discussion about it, but at this time, Calabasas is not affected by the case because of the way the zoning was done here. So, next slide. So the implications for other cities is, as we described, they may very well get sued for having a housing element that fails to comply with state housing laws. And as we discussed before, they may be now subject to builder's remedy if their housing, housing elements are decertified. So, so as I talked before, when you think you're safe because you have a certified housing element, that may not necessarily be the case. You may have a court that makes a decision like this that upsets the entire apple cart. So it's a very dynamic area of the law, and just wanted to share these things with you so that you know what's happening around you, and just kind of expose you to these concepts, and hopefully it's been useful, so.
Well, thank you very much. The, the, the landscape is, is constantly changing, the legal landscape, so we, it, this type of presentation is very, very helpful to just keep us abreast.
May I ask a question of staff?
Of course.
Can we get an assessment, I guess, of what percentage of the people that we have to convince to deal with this in the city are renters and who are residential owners, and then commercial and industrial, I guess, lessees and owners? Is that something that's possible to create a map, or at least a list of the, I guess, the, the number of residents, residential units that we have and rental units that we have? Because that's one of the main problems we're going to have to deal with in educating people of what we're facing here and at city council. And you guys are facing it in spades in the staff chambers, that's for sure.
Some, there, there could be some census data. We don't have those numbers easily hand, easily available. It is something that we do as an exercise in the housing element updates, so, and that's something that we have to hire consultants to dig into more information.
Well, can we approximate it by asking AI to tell us what's going on in this town?
We, we did do it in 2021 for our current housing element.
Right.
So we have some data from that. It was pretty high. I think like at least 60% or 70% of the homes in the city were owned, or owner-occupied homes is what I seem to remember. We could look for it, and if, if you want, we can point you in the, in our housing element background section if we have that data.
Well, our future is going to depend upon, you know, what kind of renter community or leasing community we have in our 14 square miles, and the pressures that we're going to face there, therein. And it would be helpful to have at least some idea of, you know, an objective measure of, you know, who's paying a property tax bill, or who's renting and never sees a property tax bill, or a parcel tax bill, or anything like that, all of which affect everything we've talked about tonight, including this, as to what the development's going to look like. I mean, if there's 137 apartments next door with a little bit of retail because it's mixed-use, then that affects the character and the quality of life in this whole community on any of the sites that are in Calabasas. So having that understanding at least of what the large picture looks like, it would be helpful, you know, for at least me on this commission and us in the community.
And I do believe that our housing element, especially in the background section, does cover a lot of what you're talking about.
And how old is the housing element in the general plan?
From, that was done in 2021.
Yeah.
And we'll redo it, revisit all of these issues again for the seventh cycle, which will be around 2028, 2029.
Well, getting AI to help us project what it might look like in '27, '28, or '29 would be helpful at this point, so we have at least some tools to understand what's going on, because it's almost impossible for me, and I have a couple of college degrees to read what I have here, and I've been at this for 35 years. This is a real big, I mean, you did a great job on the report, and the staff does a great job on everything, but trying to cope with that in our little town at this dais right now, it's really hard. So anything we can do to make our job a little more, I guess, navigable, you know, for the six commissioners that we have here would be really helpful. And you guys have done a great job, in my opinion, preparing the objective standards and dealing with all the anticipation of what HCD was going to try to do to us because of San Francisco.
Perhaps staff's time would be better spent if, as some of these things arise, if they can provide that information in conjunction with something that arises, because a lot of this actually doesn't, well, some of this doesn't apply to us. So to, to go wholesale into, you know, studies, you know, staff is-
No, I'm not asking for a study. I'm asking for an approximation so that we can come to grips with it, with some common sense analysis, that's all.
And I, I think that that makes sense in conjunction with, with items that are before us.
Right.
Yeah, so.
We're doing it.
All right.
Thank you. Yeah, and thank you, John.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move on. We are actually on to the director's report.
Thank you. I'll try and make this quick. Just as a house cleaning item, we are going to cancel the December 4th meeting and the January 1st meeting. So the next meeting that we have coming up will be December 18th, assuming that that other, the project that was continued sticks on that. If not, we'll advise the commission and probably cancel that meeting.
I want to meet on January 1st.
You want to meet? Okay.
Absolutely.
Then we won't, we won't cancel it.
I think it should be a mandatory meeting for everyone. Sorry, couldn't resist.
And then, in addition to that, I do want to advise the commission that on October 22nd, staff issued a determination of similar use for a auto showroom at the Common Shopping Center. The reason why we had to go through this process is because our zoning code does not define an auto showroom, and if you think about like a Tesla, or Rivian, or Lucid, they don't have traditional dealerships. They're often located in a shopping center. There's one at Tepanga Mall. There's one down in Malibu at the, the shopping center. And they're usually around 5,000 square feet. They're not very big spaces, and they'll have one or two vehicles. People can come and talk to a sales consultant, but they're not actually storing inventory. They don't have mechanics. They're, it's not part and services. So from a logistic and practical standpoint, they function very similar to any other retail shop. Now, our zoning code doesn't define that. We have auto dealerships, and we have retail, and auto dealerships are allowed in certain zoning districts, not allowed in the mixed-use zoning district. So when this application came forward, based on the characteristics and the scope of what the operational plan that was submitted, we were able to make the determination that although it's called an auto showroom, it functions the same as any other retail space, and therefore, there's a determination that it is effectively a retail space that-
Can you buy a car there?
You can talk to a sales consultant, and they can assist you. They would have the ability to execute a contract, but you wouldn't pick up your car there.
Oh, okay, good. What, what kind of car is it, or cars?
This particular application was for Rivian.
Okay, and it's all like that.
So again, it, it, it functions-
Except you're not buying one now, okay.
It functions as a, as a, more of a showroom.
Got it.
They usually point most people to their website to order their car on that. It's not a pickup destination. It's, again, it's just that showroom.
But they'll have models there for people to look at?
They will have models for people to explore the product.
Okay, okay.
And so because of that, though, we had a, we did issue that determination of similar use. Our zoning code requires the director to provide a oral update to the planning commission at its next meeting of that determination. So that is what this is for.
We consider ourselves updated. Thank you. Anything further? Okay. Any reports from any commissioners? Anything, anything?
Just a small recommendation. Ken, Ken Burns' new documentary on the American Revolution came out on PBS. It's been long awaited, and it's very good.
Yeah, it is. It's incredible.
Thank you for that. All right. Have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and happy, yeah. No, have, everybody have a happy Thanksgiving. Don't eat too much.